Hello.
Hey, Don, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Phil.
Okay, I'm gonna go, you're on there, you're on, so if you could just go and put your phone on silent mode.
Okay.
We'll be good to go, so the meeting will start in about four minutes.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, Don, alright, bye.
Bye.
Welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, six P M. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. Father Tom Jones, Church of the Holy Spirit is with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Close, pray. Almighty God, to whom we must account for all our powers and privileges, send down upon those who hold office in our city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice.
Open their hearts to the concerns of those they represent, guide them so they may make wise decisions, and enable them through steadfast purpose to faithfully serve in their office and promote the well-being of all people. We ask all this through whom makes all things possible. Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Father Jones, for your back-to-back invocations. Item three, call to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Yes, Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister. Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister is listening in on the speaker, so just to let you know he's there. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports, five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Burn, or Cook.
Thank you, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
Just a second. There you go. No, I went backwards. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item seven, special presentations, we have none this evening. Eight organizational matters, we have none. Item nine, approval, approved citizen communications, we did not receive any requests. Item ten, liquor licenses, we have none this evening. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four-one-three-nine, request to rezone lots one and two, the shadows replat two, being a replat of lots fifty-four, fifty-five, part of lot one-fifty-nine, Fontanel Hills two, and lots twelve B and thirteen. The shadows from RS one-twenty and RS one-twenty P S to RS one-twenty and RS one-twenty P S for the purpose of existing single-family residential. Applicant Amanda Ogwansky, general location two-one-five Bellevue Boulevard South. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-three-nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number four-one-zero-four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about two-fifteen Bellevue Boulevard South. More particularly, described in Section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four-one-three-nine.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item eleven A-one, request to small subdivision plat lots one and two, the shadows replat two. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item eleven A-one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item eleven B, ordinance number four-one-four-zero, request to annex tax lot eighteen, located in Section twenty-three, township thirteen north, range thirteen east, of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and all abutting rights of way, applicant city of Bellevue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-four-zero, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four-one-four-zero.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Cook. Any comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I just have a question. Jim, so, um, I think during the first reading, I think you kind of explained some of this, and I'm just wondering if you can sort of give more explanation behind. Um, and I'm really asking for, for the, this item and the next three items. Can you just give maybe more of a, an explanation? I can't remember what you quite said. Yeah, that was like a couple months ago, I think. I think it's actually when we just had the intent, when we voted on the resolutions with the intent to, to do these annexations. So, that was, that was like a few months ago.
Been a while, yep. So I think if, um, all four separate properties are part of a future commercial development, and, um, from the entertainment district to just commercial one within itself, and along with that, um, for the application for the Good Life Tax Credit, it has to be within city limits. So, as we move forward to apply for that Good Life Tax Credit, um, through the state, part of that is to incorporate these in, so, um, we're moving kind of quick on the, to get the application in front for that, that tax credit. And then with the future development here, which you guys will hear probably, I think you're, you may be on our three-on-threes too, is some of the breakout on that, so. But, I don't know if that answers it in the short cycle.
Yeah, can you explain the tax credit to me, though? I mean, and I remember you saying that, but I can't re-explain it if someone were to ask me, so I just, can you break that down?
So the legislature passed this, um, in the last session where the state collects five-point-five percent on sales tax. And what the Good Life Tax Credit is, is then the state reduces their tax credit, their five-point-five to two-point-seven-five for sales tax, and then allows the city to take that two-point-seven-five and create what you would call an occupation tax, so it's net neutral, but then you can use that two-point-seven-five of what was originally the state's sales tax for the development itself, so, um, you're gonna see some of that in Gretna, it's taking that same two-point-seven-five for the area that they've got, like a couple hundred acres underneath development, we'll use that same two-point-seven-five for, uh, some of the projects that will go with its infrastructure and some of the other items in that. So it's really, it's a net, the net zero when it comes to that sales tax, they just reduce theirs, and then we just, we put it back on as an occupation tax for any goods or services sold, so.
Okay, so for example, okay. In the, like, within these, these parcels, um, somebody comes in and develops that land because they purchased it. And then, rather than, like, let's say they sell, sell a good, versus, uh, rather than the state collecting all of it, that, what did you say, two-point-seven-five comes back to the city versus, and then like the rest, the remainder, two-point-five goes to the state? So is that what you're, is that, is that what I heard you just say?
Correct. If you went to a restaurant and bought a meal tonight, you'd pay the seven percent sales tax, in which five-point-five is the portion that goes to the state. The state would reduce theirs by two-point-seven-five, so that's, that sales tax bill would be minus that two-point-seven-five, but then the city has the capability of coming back and adding that two-point-seven-five back in as an occupation tax. On the end of the day, on that meal, you'd still pay seven percent.
Okay, just as a consumer, but like from the city's standpoint, the city's actually gaining income, like in the, the difference of that seven percent or whatever, is that correct?
Us or the developer, which could be used for the development, so there's some things that we would have to use that for, so that two-point-seven-five would go towards either the infrastructure or the development itself, so. Instead, you're gaining it, but you're turning around using it and reinvesting it into the development itself. It's like an economic development incentive.
Okay, and then if, for example, so the city can apply for it, or the developer could potentially apply for it, is that?
Correct.
The way you just explained that?
Yes.
And then, my next question is, like, is it specific to these parcels? How does that work? Can you explain that? I think I asked that a little bit, like, for example, why is it so specific? Like, is it just this area? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, so we have to define a Good Life Tax Credit District, so we have to give, when we apply for that, that tax credit, we have to give them the boundary, so it doesn't go statewide, and I think, Harrison, it's two thousand acres is the max, is it? So within that two thousand acre limit, you have to, and it has to be contiguous, I believe, but you have to define where that, that, uh, district is. No, it doesn't have to be contiguous. But you have to define where you're going to apply that at.
Okay, and then, I mean, does it have to be a specific, or does it ha, can it be like broader? Do you know what I mean? Like, how does that, that work? Do you know what I mean? So it, like, it can only be a certain amount of acres, or, like, can the boundaries be bigger?
So let's say if we, right now, we apply for five hundred acres for what this development would be, and then, um, another five hundred acres is available across town, you could apply for that, for that. You define each one of those as a Good Life Tax, Tax District up to two thousand acres.
Up to two thousand acres, okay, so then you, it's like recreate, you can, you can create as many of these districts as you essentially want to, or is that? But up to two thousand acres?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions. Um, and then, for example, like, I guess I don't know exactly what's gonna happen, and I know that we do have, like, three-on-threes. But I mean, does this kind of tie into, like, the whole entertainment, entertainment district thing? I, I have some reservation, my reservation is, and I'm asking some of these questions just for my understanding, and also so if people ask me questions, I can explain that, but I, I guess my reservation is, is until we really have those three-on-threes, until I really have, like, more information as to like, like, I guess sort of the bigger picture, like, I understand that we've talked about an entertainment district, or potential raceroo, or, you know, maybe a number of other people who are interested, you know what I mean, and as far as laying out, like, some of the infrastructure. I just, I guess my, my concern is, is I just wanna have more of an understanding and like clearer picture.
You'll get it.
So. Yeah, so, and so with that, I guess, like, not just explaining this to Jim, but just for the public, I guess I almost would rather vote on this later, so that way I could actually, if we have those three-on-threes and we have that information, 'cause then I feel like I'm sort of voting on something prior to having maybe more of a, a bigger picture of, of the entire area. So, I'm not saying that we need to continue this or anything, I mean, I'm not asking that, but I just, I guess, wanna justify why I'm, I'm gonna vote no on this and the next three items, so.
The development itself, so when you think about the commercial development, that would happen with or without the Good Life Tax Credit, so that's separate, but we've kind of pinned them both together, so that development still would go forward. And I guess to make it clear, too, is that the Good Life Tax Credit cannot include the racetrack or a casino, so that won't be part of, part of that. This is just strictly for the area that's gonna be like, if you wanna say, the entertainment district, but it'll be more commercialized, but the development would go forward with or without it. So, uh, we're still moving forward because of the interest on that particular property, um, to develop that for a variety of commercial development. So it's just conjoined together, I guess you could say, um, but it would happen without it.
Okay. And Jim, didn't you say that, um, because we had our three-on-three today, didn't you say that it has, to get the good life, it has to be city-owned property?
No, it has to be within city limits.
Within the city limits, okay, okay, my mistake on that, on that wording, but it has to be within the city limits to be able to even qualify for that.
I just add, the three-on-threes don't really cover the, the Good Life District. Um, the Good Life District is just a vehicle to promote growth and development. The three-on-threes are covering the projects that were going that could go into that area, but, um, this is just a vehicle the state provided with the tran, Good Life Transformational Act. It allowed cities to, they want, they want that retail, they want that service to come to our cities, so they've created this vehicle to allow the cities to use half that sales tax to, to build within that area, so. Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a pretty simple process, it's just, it's a tool that allows the cities to, to get additional funding to help develop.
Okay.
Councilman Cook?
I, I got a couple questions. Jim, so that, we're identifying an area, and then we're gonna submit an application that, I think it's obvious, but that, that split of the five-and-a-half percent is just in that boundary.
Correct.
And, and then it's put in a pot, and a developer or the city, where someone could come and say, I, I got a project, this is what I wanna do. Can we narrow or enlarge that district, say, after it's approved, can we increase it or narrow it?
Harrison, are we bound, we can come back at a later date and add more territory in, but right now we've just focused in this one area. It's the most logical area to use that for. Uh, we, we, we don't have anything else identified beyond, I think we're probably right around four hundred acres, maybe roughly four to five hundred acres, but we're kind of sticking within that parameter, but we could come back and add that if we wanted to.
And, and I think, I think, for me, as I look at this, where, where is the natural growth of the city gonna go? It's to the south. You got Normandy Hills right there, right in the mix of all this, that's where the development is gonna occur. We are in the process of, we'll start be counting other cities, putting sewer not only there, but across the city, so we're making that, uh, all that property sewer accessible. Uh, the city has taken the lead, or is doing the project, paying for the project, to bring water down there. Um, I, 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 I think it's, for me, where else would our next development go? Can't go east, can't go north, can't go west, I mean, that's just where it's at, I mean, you can go out to Thirty-Sixth Street, Forty-Eighth Street, I mean, you can still, there's still area down there, but I think the attraction for commercial development is at intersection of seventy-five and thirty-four. I, I just think it's the logical next step. We, we are already looking at the future by putting in sewer, we're putting in water. The state, you know, I don't know if that was ten, twelve years ago, brought Highway thirty-four across for us, I think it's a very attractive. If you wanna do anything by water, by rail, by semi, by flying out of Epley, I mean, you, if you had something down there, and I mean, you know, and I, I think we'd rather probably refer to it as a commercial, but there, we're just, it's just a good location of bringing people in and out pretty easy, and hopefully we can develop a pretty good place down there, if it's an entertainment district, whatever it is. But, it's not a done deal, and it's not gonna all start tomorrow. We gotta lay the groundwork, people might, we always hear the, the, the wording of shovel-ready, uh, land projects to get things going, so. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, eleven B, ordinance number forty-one forty, we have a motion by Casey, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
I have four yes votes and one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you, item eleven C, ordinance number four-one-four-one, request to annex tax lot twenty-four, located in Section twenty-two, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and all abutting rights of way. Applicant city of Bellevue, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-four-one, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries, and designating an effective date.
And do I have a motion for eleven C? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four-one-four-one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
We have four yes votes, one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no, motion carries.
Thank you, item eleven D, ordinance number four-one-four-two, request to annex tax lot ten-dash-one, tax lots thirteen and fourteen B, tax lot nineteen A-two, tax lot twenty-one, tax lot nineteen A-one B, tax lot nineteen A-one A-one A, tax lot twenty, tax lot twenty-two, and lot one, hike addition, all located in Section twenty-two, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and all abutting rights of way, applicant city of Bellevue. And I'm gonna turn this over to Council President Cook, um, as I have a, um, conflict of interest owning two small parcels, as I described last week.
I'd like to make a note that it's six-twenty-three, and the mayor has left the chamber. Susan, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance number four-one-four-two, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, Susan, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thanks, Council President Cook, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number four-one-four-two.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Casey, seconded by Welch. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, please vote.
Four yes votes, one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no, motion carries.
Thank you. It's, uh, six-twenty-four, and the mayor has returned to the council.
Thank you, Council President Cook, item eleven E, ordinance number four-one-four-three, request to annex the southeast quarter, parcel ID zero-one-zero-six-one-three-zero-zero-five, lot one, Prairie View Acres, and all tax lots two B, east part, tax lot two C, and three, all located in Section fifteen, township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and all abutting rights of way. Applicant city of Bellevue, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-four-three, an ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number four-one-four-three.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw. Motion by Cook, seconded by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
We have four yes votes and one no vote, with Councilman Burns voting no, motion carries.
Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four-one four-five. Request to rezone lots one and two, Perez addition replat one. Being a replat of lot three Perez addition from R E to R E P S. With site plan approval for the purpose of single-family residential development, small subdivision plat lots one and two. Perez addition replat one, and waiver of section six dash four subdivision regulations. Applicant T D squared, engineering and surveying, general location one zero seven one five Old Thirty-sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four-one four-five, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map. Of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by article three of ordinance number four-one zero-four. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about. One zero seven one five Old Thirty-sixth Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, that second reading and public hearing will be February sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P M here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, we have none this evening. Item fifteen, resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one. A resolution to approve the amended budget for the Sarpy County and City's wastewater agency fiscal year. Two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize the mayor to sign, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number two-zero-two-four dash zero one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Casey, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen A. Approve the fourteenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms. For custom farming approximately thirty-six acres on thirty-six and Cape Heart Road. In an amount not to exceed ten thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And the fourteenth extension to the contract with Justin Toms. For custom farming approximately sixty-two acres near the Bellevue Sports Complex. In an amount not to exceed twenty thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And to waive council policy four, requiring solicitation of bids on goods and services costing more than thirty thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen A.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen B, approve the estimate from Best Cut Lawn Care for an emergency repair to replace the retaining wall. At the old historic Bellevue Bank in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
By Cook, seconded by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and, approve the acquisitions, permanent and temporary easements. For the Thirty-sixth Street Improvement Project in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion to approve sixteen C.
Second.
Motion by Cook, sec- seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D. Approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services contract with H D R to assist. With a grant application to develop a master plan for all signalized intersections. Within the city of Bellevue in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make a motion we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number three. To engineering services agreement with H D R Engineering for the Hayworth Park ma- wa- wastewater collection system. In an amount not to exceed the previous amount by two hundred and forty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Alfred Benish and Company. For the municipal separate storm sewer system, M S four. Annual reporting in an amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen G, recommend approval of the proposal. Proposal from Mid Iowa Equipment Sourcewell for replacement of the wastewater C C T V van. Including P O S M software package in an amount not to exceed six hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion we approve sixteen G.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Dustle Construction. To replace the shelter at Hayworth Ballfield in an amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen H.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by McCaw, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the city of Bellevue and Olson, Inc. Not to exceed sixty-eight thousand three hundred dollars for future Thirty-sixth Street widened roadway. Thirty-sixth Street roadway improvements from Sheridan Road to Platteville Road. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, make a motion we approve sixteen I.
I'll second that.
Motion by Welch, seconded by, or, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement. Between the city of Bellevue and Premier Sports Village, L L C. And do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly reports are given at the first council meeting of each month, December and January reports will be attached to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four council packet. We'll, um, put those in the record, there's no closed session, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.